Good evening. I would like to call to order the special meeting noticed for today. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Here.
Councilmember Udi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Talt.
Here.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Here. The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. To ensure that everyone, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear all speakers clearly, please speak directly into the microphone. Please note that all comments are limited to two minutes and will be timed by city staff. I would like to now ask City Clerk Baker to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We'll accept comments in three ways. We'll take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it in to me if you wish to speak on an item. There's a count-on timer to the left of the public microphone to help speakers keep track of their remaining time to speak. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else you may not see it or know which item you're asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Three, I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 3:00 PM cutoff the day of a city council meeting for emailed public comments. This is to ensure there is sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after 3:00 PM the day of a city council meeting will be included in the public comment record but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak at this time who is present? Seeing none, do we have any public comment requests submitted electronically?
There are no requests for general comment.
Thank you. Moving on, do we have a city manager's report?
We do indeed, Madam Mayor. Let's have our enjoyable practice of seeing if the remote works tonight. All right, so jumping right in. Nope. Can you go to the next slide, please? All right. The first order of business, of course, is, as I'm sure everybody is well aware, we are in the middle of a surge in terms of COVID cases. Omicron is looming large in our world and the numbers are skyrocketing. You can see here this chart, which was prepared earlier today, included the total number of cases for San Marino at nine hundred and seventy-six. We've got breaking news at four forty-seven PM today from the Health Department's daily update that that number is actually up to nine hundred and eighty-nine cases. And just for some perspective, two and a half weeks ago, on December twenty-seventh, our case number was five hundred and eighty-two. That means we've jumped four hundred and seven cases in the last two and a half weeks alone. So we certainly want to urge people to be vigilant. Go ahead to the next slide, please. As a result, we have made some changes inside City Hall, which I suspect most people are already aware of. But we have canceled some things and rearranged some protocols to make serving the community a little bit safer. So we are certainly encouraging virtual customer service whenever possible. So if you have business to do with the city, we certainly encourage you to try giving us a call or interacting with us online before coming in so that we can keep everybody safe. We have canceled or made virtual or moved outside any city events that have been occurring indoors for the month of January. That includes our own events, that includes room rentals and so forth. Outdoor events, we are permitting on a case-by-case basis based on the number of attendees as measured against the space that they will be occupying. Passport services have moved to by appointment only. Our commission and boards will remain virtual for January. And there are also several new rules going into effect for workplaces. So within City Hall, there are new guidelines for isolating and quarantining should there be positive tests or exposures. And as of this coming Monday, we have a new face mask requirement in our work setting. So you can see that some of us have moved to higher-level masks. We're now required to wear medical-grade masks, which means these are either surgical masks, KN95s or N95s, and the city is required to provide those to our employees. So we are all moving in that direction and trying to keep everybody safe. And in a couple of weeks, we'll be reassessing what we may or may not need to do for February. Go ahead, the next slide, please. Two major opportunities for our community to get involved, and I want to thank the mayor in her State of the City address. She is emphasizing these points as well. We appreciate it. We do have two great opportunities to get involved in making this community even better than it already is. The first is the DEI Task Force. That stands for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And this is a group that's going to be working to make San Marino an inclusive place for everybody who is here. That deadline for applications is January twenty-eighth. It is coming up quickly, and we would love to see people offer their application to serve. And just as a reminder, you can apply yourself, or you can apply for somebody else. So someone that you think would be great for this, and it isn't you, we'd love to hear about them as well. We have our general plan update underway, and that process requires a steering committee, which are members of the community, and so we are accepting applications for that as well. That is a very important document that will guide the structure of our city for years to come. It is not just a land use and planning document. So if you are passionate about the community, as we know all of our residents are, we encourage you to get involved and submit your name for this steering committee. And the application for that is February fifteenth. Last but not least, go ahead to the next slide, please. Our fourth, our final slide. There it is. I want to give a big thank you to our interim Community Development Director, Mr. Alex Hamilton, who's sitting next to me tonight. Our permanent Community Development Director is starting on January thirty-first, and so this will be my last city manager's update while Alex is still here. He has come in in the wake of Aldo's departure and handled some very thorny issues for us and taken care of them with grace and with skill, and we are so appreciative. This is just a couple of the things that he's taken care of since he's been here. So he's dealt with our SB nine, SB thirty-five things. He, of course, has been dealing with our housing element. He solved the Grad Night issue, focus on the San Marino Center, the EIR, which we're going to hear a little bit about tonight, and really so much more, just like the slide says. So I am super appreciative that you've joined us for a few months and really appreciate everything you've done. I know the council feels the same, and we really appreciate this. Thank you so much. And that concludes my report. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Merlo. Any questions from council? Seeing none.
No, but well wishes to Director Hamilton. It's been a pleasure to deal with you, and you had a significant role in helping the city this fall in an important time, particularly with regard to what was on the screen and all of the housing legislation. So thank you very much for your hard work in that, making that happen.
Thank you. Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Were you going to report, or was the city manager's report and operational dashboard that we received that was part of our package? Is that something just for information, or were you going to, can you answer questions regarding?
It's probably both. It's for your information, and if there are questions, either I will answer.
Well, I'm just, you know, I note from a revenue side that last year, by this time, it appears we've received the property tax money in, at least according to, let me get that out. Page fourteen of nine sixty-two. It shows that last year, we received the revenues by December of eight point four million approximately, and this year, we haven't received them yet. Is that just by virtue of the fact that you can't, you didn't have that information in?
Yeah, so, so we did receive our property tax as scheduled in December. The problem was, for this reporting purposes, we weren't able to close the fist, the month, so that's why it wasn't reflected here. What I can tell you is that what we collected in December for this year's property tax was seven point nine million dollars versus last year, we collected seven point seven million dollars. It's just not reflected in this report just due to timing.
Okay, this says revenues of eight point four million were received in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And didn't you just tell me that it was seven point seven?
Yes. So this total revenue is eight point four is accumulation of all revenues, not only property tax.
I understand.
Yes.
And where does our revenues sit as of now that you're able to close the year? What was the total amount of revenues received in December?
Probably. We were close to, at least property tax-wise, we were close to three percent higher than last year. I don't have the exact number at the top of my head, but it was higher than last year, that's for sure. Just property tax alone was three percent.
And the other revenues?
Other revenues, I do know at the top of my head that on recreation side, we've been seeing a big increase. And the recent closures, we've seen a decrease, but overall, rec revenues have been over close to ninety percent higher than last year this time period, too.
Okay, thank you. I think you explained it. Thank you, Paul.
And I would also say for your enjoyment, Finance Director Chang will be presenting the mid-year financial report at next month's February ninth meeting, where you will get all sorts of detailed information about the mid-year report for this fiscal year and our projections for future years. So you'll get to drill down a lot more next month.
Thank you for that commercial. Any other questions of Dr. Merlo? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion and a second to wait for the readings? Councilmember move.
Second.
Udi, we have a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. In order to respect the time of our consultant and to be fiscally responsible, I would like to pull item two to be heard first, since item one will be a more lengthy item. So may we move on to item two, the adoption of the resolution R twenty-two dash oh-two?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Just a brief overview, since the staff report is quite lengthy. The city and the San Marino Police Officers Association began negotiating on a mandatory vaccine mandate back on August twelfth of two thousand and twenty-one. They turned out to be the only group of employees that would not agree to a vaccine mandate or were not under a imposed vaccine mandate. On October fifth, the parties declared an impasse of negotiations, essentially that it was futile to continue talking at the table anymore. We were at loggerheads with diametrically opposed positions. Under the city's impasse process, there is a provision for advisory arbitration to be conducted by a third party selected by the parties to conduct that arbitration. The POA elected to go to advisory arbitration, and that advisory arbitration was held on December eleventh. On December twenty-second, an advisory opinion was issued by that arbitrator, and the opinion essentially upholds the city's position and rejects the POA's position. That opinion is attached to the staff letter, and I will not go into detail as to the particulars of that opinion. Under the city's impasse process, once that advisory arbitration report is issued, then the council can either accept it or reject it. You have a resolution before you tonight, and staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution accepting the advisory fact-finder's report. I should note for the council that this is not the end of the impasse process. Under state law, the POA has the right to request fact-finding. They've requested fact-finding, and that fact-finding hearing is now scheduled for February eleventh. At such time as the fact-finding proceedings are concluded pursuant to statute, we will be bringing the results of that fact-finding back to the council. We anticipate that coming back to council sometime perhaps in March of this year. With that, I'm open to answer any questions the council may have before adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, and I apologize for not announcing in advance Mr. Filarski as our Labor Council. For questions, may we start, please, with Councilwoman Shepard Rami? Do you have any questions?
No, I think the staff report summarizes our current position.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang.
No questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor Tom.
I have no questions.
And I do not have any either. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Does anyone here wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have any public comment requests submitted electronically?
There are no requests for comment on this item.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring the item back to council for discussion. Do I have any additional comments or questions from council?
Yes, just know that if you're vaccinated, you know, you won't die, you won't transmit, you won't get COVID. So we don't have to worry about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number R dash twenty-two dash oh-two, accepting the advisory recommendation of the arbitrator regarding a mandatory vaccine mandate for employees represented by the Civil Police Officers Association.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Epstein, thank you.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we will now return to item number one, and we will be hearing in a moment here. May we please have a presentation from interim director Hamilton?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council, tonight, you're receiving an update on the San Marino Center Improvement Project and as well as scoping session for the draft EIR that is underway. I'm going to, if I can forward this. Doesn't look like it's worth. Okay, so as a, as a bit of background, on December ninth of two thousand and twenty, the city council selected a floor plan scheme and exterior elevation designs for the renovation of the San Marino Center. The style of architecture that was selected at that time was Spanish Revival. Crane Architectural Group was retained to develop plans and specifications based on that direction. Their plans are at ninety-five percent complete. The renovation of the San Marino Center does constitute a project per the California Environmental Quality Act. We call it CEQA. There'll be some acronyms. I'll try and I'll define them first and try and not overuse acronyms if I can help that. Also, on December ninth of two thousand and twenty, the city council awarded a contract to the CEQA consulting firm ELMT to begin preparation of a focused environmental impact report for the project. The determination that an EIR was necessary was in response to public comments indicating that anything less than an EIR as a CEQA review would be potentially challenged. Next slide, please. So typically, an initial study, we call it NIS, is first done to identify the potential environmental impacts associated with the project. But again, given that direction from the council and the feedback at the meeting in two thousand and twenty, the election was made to go forward with an EIR. The initial study then identifies the appropriate level of review based on potential impacts, their level of significance, and whether those impacts can be mitigated. As I indicated, the city council did in two thousand and twenty, of December of two thousand and twenty, direct that the highest level of review, a focused EIR for the project be prepared. As to the scoping meeting, when an EIR is prepared, a scoping meeting is a tool that is used to inform the community of the project and identify any areas of potential environmental concerns that the project may have or that could then be subsequently analyzed in the CEQA document. A scoping meeting is not required per CEQA, but it is a useful tool, as we'll see tonight, to, as a source of information for the project and to get community input. Next slide, please. Tonight's meeting was scheduled to update the council, as I said, on the project status and provide input on the scope of the environmental review. In addition, per CEQA, an EIR must include the identification and study of project alternatives, including the no-build alternative. The project and its alternatives are fully analyzed in the staff report and the initial study that you have a copy of. The initial study has indicated that there will be potentially significant and unavoidable impacts associated with the project design, the Spanish Revival, both as it relates to cultural resources and land use planning, hence a focused EIR is necessary. The initial study has identified an alternative whose impacts could be fully mitigated. For this alternative, the design of the project would be modern colonial revival consistent with, more or less with what we have now. Next slide, please. This alternative, the modern colonial revival, would seek to incorporate cultural and historic elements into the project design. Pursuing this alternative would require a redesign of the project. It is estimated redesigning the project would likely cost between two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars. This direction would require council approval of a contract amendment with Crane Architectural Group. To date, we have spent approximately, and I'm going to correct that number based on some numbers, more current numbers I have. We spent approximately four hundred and nineteen thousand, more or less, on project, not only the project design, but other elements of the project from the lead and asbestos survey to other studies that are necessary for the project. Next slide, please. The task force, the task force met last week, January sixth, for an update on the project, including the initial study results. The task force was disappointed in the potential design direction change, but were unanimously supportive of moving to the modern colonial revival style. Their main concern, obviously costs are concerned, but their main concern centered on the loss of time and the impact to the project's schedule that this would have. Because of this, the task force unanimously recommended city council approve a contract amendment now rather than waiting until June when the CEQA final environmental impact is ready for certification. They recommend that the council authorize this action at its next meeting to begin the transition toward preparing plans reflecting the modern colonial revival style. There are two members of the task force present tonight, Mr. Raymond Chang in person and Jennifer Giles remotely to speak to that recommendation. Next slide. Assuming council considers and approves the contract amendment at its next scheduled meeting, the following schedules reflects the estimated project deliverable dates, both for CEQA design and groundbreaking for construction. Again, tonight's item is receive and file to provide any comments on the project scoping meeting for consideration in the draft CEQA document. I believe we do have some comments in that regard, as well as provide direction to staff to come back to council if you so desire with the contract amendment at your meeting of the January the twenty-eighth. Next slide. So the next slide is the project schedule, and there's two schedules here. And it's important to note that the first schedule simply reflects milestones that can be achieved if you do provide direction at the next meeting to move forward with an amendment with Crane to revise the architecture of the the architectural style. The key dates for the scoping and for the environmental portion here is, on January seventh, we did release the draft initial study and the notice of preparation and other supporting material. It was also submitted electronically to the state clearinghouse and filed with the county clerk. Of course, this meeting tonight is a scoping meeting to gather any additional comments on or on environmental concerns that may be out there. January twenty-eighth would be at the council's discretion in direction, a city council meeting to approve the contract amendment with Crane. Revised drawings in that case would take about four months. For purposes of CEQA, the scoping period ends February sixth. And then March first, the draft focused EIR would be released for, begin the public review period. That runs for thirty days, closes on March thirty-first. By May first, all written responses and responses to comments as required by CEQA would be done and completed. Late May, if you direct staff and approve the amendment for the revised design, that design would be complete in late May. June eighth, the city council would certify the final EIR and support the, approve the project alternative and drawings and authorize the public works to go out to bid. Then after that, after June eighth, July twenty-eighth, there would be a city council meeting to award the contract for the construction, and there's a breaking ground of September first. So those are the key milestones. The next slide, and this is with council action at its next meeting to approve the, moving forward with the alternative design drawings. The next slide, the CEQA milestones stay the same. The key difference here is if we, if you don't act to direct staff to do that is on June eighth. You would get, the final EIR would be certified, and you would, at that point, choose a project alternative. You would either end the project, revert to the modern architectural style, and direct staff to bring back a contract amendment with Crane, similar to what I described, but what would be happening in January rather than in June. And then you would also adopt, if you stick with the current style that is reflected in the ninety-five percent set, you would adopt a stating, a statement of overriding considerations to proceed with the proposed Spanish architectural style. And then on June twenty-fourth, you would approve the contract amendment with Crane to revise the drawings, which again takes four months. And they would be complete in late October and you, back to city council to approve and authorize to go out to bid in November, and then award a contract in December, and then break ground in January of two thousand and twenty-three. So that's about a six-month difference in the two schedules. The CEQA schedule stays the same. It's just the steps that, in the direction that we're seeking tonight as it relates to your comments on the project itself, as well as any additional comments that you think we should consider as part of the scoping. This concludes my presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I know there was an extensive amount of work put into your staff report. We thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask for questions from council. Why don't we, Councilmember Huang, would you like to begin?
Yes, so my question is why didn't we find out, I mean, I'm not trying to point fingers here, but why didn't we find out about this before we decided to go ahead with the Spanish revival, the Spanish colonial design?
I will go ahead and take that since I won't make Alex try to go back in time. When we had the original discussion about whether to move to a Spanish style or the modern colonial revival style, we had a conversation initially, our previous Community Development Director, with Mary Ringoff, who was our Historic Preservation Consultant. And we asked the question, we know that the San Marino Center is historic by virtue of its usage. Will that impact the architectural style that we can or can't do? And at the time, she said, no, it won't impact it at all. You should be free to do whatever it is that you need to do with the facade because it's not significant for architectural reasons. And that's in your staff reports from back at that time, and we had extensive discussion at that time about that. As we proceeded through this process and we've gotten information, when the cultural piece of the study was completed, the report came back saying that because it was historic, no matter why it was historic, changing the facade would negatively impact. We were surprised because that is not what we thought was going to happen, but that's why you do this process, is to get information like that. We did go back to Ms. Ringoff, and she said, well, now that I see this, this probably is the right answer. So there's no, there's no fingers to point. Everybody tried to do the best that they could do. We genuinely thought at the time, but based on the advice that we'd been given, that we could adjust the facade if the community so desired it. And as you recall, That we could adjust the facade if the community so desired it. And as you recall, the community did desire it. And that was why several of you chose to go in that direction. And now we've gotten different information and are coming back to you with that different recommendation.
Okay, so. We were talking about six month of difference according to Director Hamilton. Should we rush it or are we gonna waste another two hundred thirty, three hundred thousand dollar down the road?
That'll be your decision.
I mean, is there a chance for that? Like if we decide to go with the the modern revival. Design, is there a translator down the road that we can't do this, we can't do that, and we have to redesign it?
Well, I could speak to that as best I can. Within the context of sequa, there's always a risk. That, you know, we could go and do a, get the direction to move the design in that direction. Prepare a focused E I R and then the E I R gets challenged. Can never know if that's going to happen, but we would know sometime in July if it will. Meanwhile, we will have saved significant months if we're able to move forward with the design and get it ready to go. As it relates to sequa, preparing a focused E I R, I mean, as it is now, and you have a copy of the initial study, it's pretty thorough. And we're hoping that, you know, we'll be able to prepare responses to comments even sooner than that, depending on the nature of the comment. So it's anybody's guess as to what's going to happen by way of a secret challenge, but I think we're in much more solid position if we prepare the focused E I R. And document everything and the revised design will attempt to integrate, you know, cultural and historical elements into the design. Thereby mitigate the impact. So it's it's less of a risk than if you move forward with the current design that's ninety five percent complete. Because you would have to adopt a statement of overriding considerations at your council meeting. And those are findings that have to be made and and in discussing with the city attorney and public works director and Marcella. It would be a heavy lift to have to come up with findings to justify why. You know, the community's interest would be served by this style of architecture versus another style. So. That's, that's my response.
And then this redesigning process. Does that have to do, I mean, anything to do with the redesigning the exterior, changing the exterior, or I mean, staying put, I mean.
It does involve changing the exterior there. I could have a public works director thrown speak to what interior modifications. May be necessary as a result of the redesign, but it's primarily the exterior and seeking to sort of bridge that gap. And incorporate the the elements that we talked about to recognize the cultural sensitivity.
But we, I mean, we start, we make any. You know, so if it can change to the exterior.
So the. We would. If you go ahead with a project alternative and give us direction to. Do the project as modern colonial revival, there would be. Updates to the exterior to make it look better. But it would still retain the historical character of the modern colonial revival architecture.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Director Hamilton. Thank you for your service. No more questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepherd-Rome, any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank.
Sure.
My first question has to do with page forty three. There's example of. Or list of existing and proposed uses of San Marino Center. And so I was wondering in here, there's no mention of our preschool program or before after school care. Will those things, am I missing it?
No, the council directed that the preschool program be moved to a third party vendor, so the city actually would have gotten out of it this year, but the school district elected to not take it. So preschool is not contemplated. And with the arrival of the school district's right at school program, which provides before and after school care. We made the decision some time ago to discontinue our before and after school program, so those would not be contemplated either.
Okay, I'm not quite following you when you said that was so fast. I thought we did decide that, but we are still in the preschool and and school care business this year. Because of the. District's failure to introduce. A new vendor to do it on the school sites, but that still was not preschool, number one. And number two, do they have a. Such a program and have they entered into contracts with a new vendor to do that on school sites? Henceforth.
So the two programs are separate, the preschool program versus the after school program. I have to take them separately. But the school district entered into an agreement with Right at School, a company. And that contract authorizes Right at School to do any number of programs, including preschool, including an after and before school program. Including summer camps and so forth. So at any point, those could be executed by right at school under the contract they already have. The city discontinued our before and after school care program. We do not offer that program any longer. We offer enrichment classes sometimes, but it's not the before and after school care program we offered before. On the preschool side, with the previous school superintendent, he had indicated an interest in starting a preschool program with right of school. That would have started in the school year that we're in the middle of right now. And so as council will recall from the budget process last year. We started submitting a budget that had no preschool because we thought the school district was going to pick it up. With the failure of the first bond measure, the district decided not to pursue that for preschool in this first year. And so we picked it back up again for one more year because the school district wasn't going to be able to do that. At which point, of course, as you all know, the superintendent left. Dr. De La Torre is the superintendent now. I have not heard about their plans. But when we originally contemplated the move to the San Marino Center for recreation staff and programming. It was always with the understanding that we would not be running a preschool program. Or a before and after school care program because there simply isn't space here. So that's always been part of the move here. And even though we added another year of preschool to try to help the community when the school district decided not to, that's not contemplated to continue.
So it might help as a point of clarification and perhaps not. The heading is for San Marino Center. So I think what you're referencing is the existing program at Stoneman?
Yes.
Okay, so we might ask for clarification since the header says S M C.
Right, this is a example of what is going to be at in the future forward looking, and it does not include a preschool or those programs.
Correct.
And is that dependent upon the school district?
It is not.
So those programs are ending this year.
The before and after school care program has already ended. And preschool is likely to end this year as well, although we have not had that conversation at this point, but it will not continue here. In this facility.
Okay. There, in this, they talk about, there's a discussion of, this may be Director Throne. Best some of the interior improvements and it's inconsistent. I'm trying to figure out their different reports, and I think it's the subcontractors. Reports, for lack of a better, I'm probably not using the initial study, and then there's supporting documents, reports in the appendix. From a couple of different vendors. Subcontractors mostly about, I'm speaking about the historical identifying features. That are discussed throughout, including the initial study. And interior improvements throughout, they talk about that. We just all walked past it. The San Marino Women's Club insignia that's on the floor here. And I wanted to know what the clarification is as to whether it will be removed because I have. In this, a couple of different places where they say they are keeping it. Another place says it may be taken out as a plaque. But then the B R, I'm sorry, I don't know all their names, especially being acronyms or initials. B C R says it's a character identifying feature, so should be left in place. But chattel, if I'm saying their name, is another historic specialist. And they say that it will be removed. So I'm trying to figure out because. What the resolution on that, it is small, but it's significant to our. Building being on the historic register as an identifying feature. So I wanted to know what's the intention in either of those. Design alternatives that we're currently contemplating.
The the intention of the design team has always been to preserve it in one fashion or the other. If we can preserve it in place, that will be the direction that will go. If we can't preserve it in place, we will basically remove it in the floor. And store it until such time that we can properly display it inside the building. But regardless, it's it's not going to be demolished. It's going to be preserved either in a existing location in some fashion. Or we'll be removing it and preserving it as as an exhibit somewhere inside the building here.
All right, thank you. The other questions I. Have concerning the parking discussion, which in the initial study, obviously we have lots of documents about it. The first mention of it in the I S is on page one fifty three for my fellow council members, and it goes on for. The analysis that there is less than significant. Impact with the mitigation. But then I I am confused as to the mitigation measures because all of these, or several of them have to do with. Conducting a future parking study and an additional parking study. And encouraging, well, those two are both prospective acts that don't really mitigate the impact of the additional parking requirements. That's on page one fifty five, and obviously it's repeated throughout. So I don't know if you have any other further information for me as to, and maybe our. City attorney can explain if he's familiar with mitigation measures. But my understanding is that mitigation members, while they can be future. In nature, like a shared event, they should not be future studies that aren't undertaken in the initial study period.
Councilmember, if I may add, and I believe the city attorney may add something as well. First thing, this is why we're doing a scoping meeting for this very reason, is to elicit comments from both you, the council and the community members. And if there are inconsistencies in the draft document, then, you know, we'll look into that, we'll address them. As it relates to mitigation measures, we also, part of the initial study as we. Elicit public comments and prepare the the draft E I R, the focused E I Rs, is to develop mitigation measures. I can't speak specifically to what mitigations are contemplated for that, but. It's it's something that we will develop and it will be in the draft E I R once it's out for circulation. Oftentimes you look at things like restriping or changing the direction of traffic flow or something such as that. There's any number of things that can be done. The traffic engineer that did this study is one of the best traffic engineers in the country, L L G. So to the extent that we have to look at things and develop mitigations, we can do that. Certainly they'll be part of the draft E I R once it's out for circulation.
And is the draft, just one follow up to what you just said. The draft E I R is not the document, I don't, didn't bring mine with, but other council members I see, and the mayor has it in front of her. That is something that is not the draft E I R, and there will be a subsequent document that's very different from that.
That's a good question, council member. Actually, not really. This document will be the contents, at least part of the contents of the draft E I R. But again, as I said, we will have mitigation measures developed as part of the draft E I R. Any comments we get tonight, we'll we'll address them in the initial study. So consider this is almost a pre E I R, for lack of a better term. It forms the backbone of the E I R and will be turned into an E I R, but there'll be more analysis. That follows that as well, especially as it relates to the project alternatives. And again, any feedback or comments that we get.
Yes, the the first step in the sequel process is to go through the initial study checklist. That looks at twenty different categories of potential environmental impacts. And to do an initial analysis of whether a potential impact is either no impact. Not significant impact, a non-significant impact with mitigation, or potentially significant impact.
Right.
So once you've gone through all of that, that informs the decision as to what level of further sequo analysis you're going to do. Normally, you wouldn't make the determination about whether you're going to do an E I R or not. Until after that initial study is completed. However, my understanding is that. The input from the community when this first came forward was we need to do an E I R. So that determination has already been made that we're going to go and do an E I R. The question is, do we have to do significant environmental analysis in all twenty categories of impact? And I think the answer from this document is no, you only really have to do it in a couple of areas. And so this is really giving you the background legwork that was done. In those twenty categories to determine, do we need to study this area further? Do we need to study this area further? Do we need to study this area further? So we're putting out to the public, here's the report on the twenty categories we looked at. And we think we only have to do a little bit more study in this particular area with regard to the cultural resources, et cetera. If the public feels differently or they want to submit some additional information that should be looked at in that focused E I R, please do so. And then the focused E I R, because it's largely limited based on the initial study to the cultural land use impact that has been discussed. It's going to be probably pretty close to what you already have here. If there were twenty different categories that had to be studied, the E I R would look a lot different than the initial study. But here you've narrowed it down pretty significantly. So unless there's some revelatory information that nobody's aware of that indicates other areas have to be studied. This initial study will largely mirror, but the E I R ends up looking like. The E I R is the environmental analysis. Comments from the public. Responses to those comments. And any mitigation measures that have to be done. It's those four components. So this is just the first look. Take comments for thirty days, and then the next document you see will be the draft E I R. That will be circulated to the public for thirty days. And they can submit comments on that. So if you have questions about inconsistencies or concerns. Please raise them, and those can be addressed in the draft E I R when that gets released. And in answer to your mitigation measure question. Yes, generally mitigation measure has to be something that can be done and implemented. It can involve future work if necessary. Frequently you see that in terms of. Excavation type things. You don't know what's under the ground until you open the ground. So there are mitigations that will be put in place. In terms of parking. Parking is in and of itself not an environmental impact. It's what results from the lack of parking that could be an environmental impact. So. Those are things that will, should be addressed in the E I R or the initial study. So if you have concerns about. The mitigation that's proposed or whatever, highlight those and they can be addressed in the draft E I R.
Okay, that helps. Thank you. Yeah, I do have considerable concerns and the community did as well. And even the letters here tonight are the comments that we've received. Primarily deal with concerns about traffic and parking because this is such a heavily impacted area. And I, to your point, the mitigation measures at the first time, I understand there. Parking is not a subsection, but the first time they're discussed regarding parking is on one fifty four and one fifty five. They involve sharing information and then future studies, and they don't seem to do. For example, concrete things like how do we restripe or where is additional offsite parking, or is there going to be shuttles for participants? I don't know, there's no concrete plans in this to deal with the parking. And I also have concerns that the uses and the buildings. Or other uses around here don't really reflect in this. Parking study, what actually the impact will be. It says it will be significant, it'll be less than significant with mitigation measures. So to me, that means it is significant if we mitigate. And these mitigation are just kicking it down the road for a year to do another study. Okay, going to the. Other questions. This has to do with the existing traffic volumes and some of the information here. It's based on. Data from a company called I DAX.
I ask where you are, council member?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, three forty nine.
Thank you.
Is a particular table, but it's actually, it starts those. Sort of figures that we have with the traffic flow and an analysis of the wait times, et cetera, you know, follows in the next several pages about that. About transportation, and that's a category that. Is of concern to the community, however. In this report or the I S, it says that it is less than significant if mitigated, if I'm reading it correctly. And again, there are some vague things to mitigate, but my question is, first off, at this point. On the table, three forty nine. In our agenda packet, it talks about. packet, it talks about the data coming from IDAX. And I wanted to know what, and then it says the traffic counts were adjusted one percent per year to account for ambient growth determining to get us to twenty-twenty-one, which I guess is what these numbers projections are on. So I'm taking it from the table itself, that these numbers are two years old, because it says twenty-nineteen here, is that the correct way? And so then, and they were adjusted for the following tables by one percent per annum?
Councilmember, that typically, as I understand it, in this case, and in projects that I've worked on, obviously, COVID has disrupted traffic patterns and traffic volumes. So the twenty-nineteen data would be a conservative way of applying the data, because it's pre-COVID. And even that, if I understand correctly, is also adjusted on an annual basis to even take a more conservative approach. So that was the approach that the traffic engineer took in this case, which would be completely appropriate, given the situation associated with the changes in trip generation with COVID.
Correct, I'm not, I'm not worried about the COVID, I'm just trying to find out the year, because I was unaware that there was a traffic study in twenty-nineteen by IDAX for the city. I've never seen this, the data before. So I, that's my problem with this.
Understood. But again, applying that data from twenty-nineteen, it's 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 old data, but it's relevant data, because it's more conservative in terms of the volumes. Right, and and we can, we can look into that.
And so I just want to make sure, because part of it is, in twenty-nineteen, for example, Director Hamilton, you might not be aware, we had the sort of ribbon cutting for the Barth Gym, which is a significant project here, was a redo of the middle school gym, and which has many other uses that are planned in the future for evenings and for weekends with various sports teams and activities and using it, utilizing it. And that has yet to be part of the study and isn't discussed in any way in the IS or this separate traffic study. So while those are projections, we have to project for what it will be post-COVID and when it's full use, it's not taken into account here at all. And so I'm hoping that we can also contact the San Marino Unified School District to get whatever traffic data they had for that project, and also work that into that, and then confirm, so we're really getting the most accurate count, because I believe that the transportation issues, namely the traffic, and a sub-issue is the parking, are going to be more significant than reflected, and they should not be, they should be thoroughly investigated.
Appreciate the feedback, and we will work with the traffic engineer to analyze that and evaluate that, and inform you of any changes. Obviously, as as Joe said, when the draft EIR is out for public circulation, any substantive issues that have changed, or, you know, any conditions that have changed, will inform you of that as well, and they'll be reflected and analyzed in the draft EIR.
Okay, those are my questions for now, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, Udi?
No questions, I have the advantage of being part of the task force.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Oh? Just trying to get my head around something, and that is, if if we, if our direction is to go with, let's move forward, but let's take, let's take the present design off the table, how will that impact the EIR, or will it at all?
So Vice Vice Mayor, it it does, because what happens is, the draft, the final EIR, when it's ready for certification in June, would have to contain a statement of overriding considerations that the city council would would have to make if you wanted to adhere to the the current design, the ninety-five percent set design, is that your question?
Well, yeah, I'm just, I I I'm wondering if we take it off the table, then the only concern with respect to the historical element of the of the the building would be what revisions we could make in a smaller way, and not just tear it off and and put on a new facade.
That's correct, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Well, and, you know, freshen it up, you know, can we replace a window or things like that, something that would occur in in any type of situation? So is that, I I mean, that means the EIR is going to look at least somewhat different when we get around to what we can do using the present design.
Right, that's correct, and and you would avoid the overriding considerations, because the EIR, based on that direction, would have all those impacts that would be mitigated in some.
Well, yeah, I mean, and and this is the cost of doing things right. So I, you know, I understand that. I don't necessarily agree with the conclusion, but, and and do you know why? I I've I've gone on the state historic site, and I and I cannot find that the women's club is listed.
Do you? I can speak to that, Vice Mayor.
I would love if you would, because I'm really confused as to how that happened.
What I, what I've heard from a number of experts is that frankly, SHPO is very slow to update
Use an
State Office of Historic Preservation.
Told me you tried not to.
Sorry. It's easier, but that they're they're delayed in getting their information uploaded in in current, but we have verified that that is the case with this facility, that it is on the register.
And that's troublesome, because here you rely on information like that, and and it's the state, it's California. Okay. Thank you, you've answered my questions.
No further questions?
No further questions.
Okay. And similarly, I think anything that I had been querying about has been addressed. So at this point, I would like to move to public comment.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
If you would take perhaps the task force members first?
Yes, absolutely. I'd like to move to public comment, and I understand that our two task force members are at the ready. Whatever order would be best for the two of you, please go ahead, and thank you for your presence.
Good evening, I'm Raymond Kang, I am one of the member of the task force. I want to thank the mayor and his council for allowing this task force to work closely with the city and also closely with the architect record. I think joining me tonight is Jennifer Giles, which I think she, I, she and I talked a little bit, I think she's going to go ahead and speak first, and then I will follow her. Jennifer, you've online, can you please go ahead and speak?
Thank you, council members, for allowing our task force to speak frankly with you. We very much enjoyed the process that we've gone through over the last year and a half, actually, I think we've been doing most of our meetings online through Zoom during COVID with this project. But we were a task force that's small but mighty and made up of a bunch of different individuals from our community of different age backgrounds and professions. And we really have gelled as a group and have come to consensus and really have worked quite well together. And we are very cooperative and eager and open to listening to all of our comments. And so we feel that what's reflected with the design is something that our task force is very much in support of. As was mentioned, we were somewhat disappointed with the outcome of what was brought to us last week, but we did talk frankly as a group and felt that what has been proposed, the the changes that have been made to the floor plan on the interior and the site plan and the upgrades that have been made to the building to comply with ADA requirements, Title twenty-four requirements, energy efficiency, we're very in support of. We all as a group hoped that the building would reflect more of the Spanish Revival style of the neighboring library, but did very much take into consideration the community's response and what is also reflected here in this draft EIR of maintaining that sort of mid-century modern revival style. We are comfortable with either of those two design styles, but feel that in order to move the project forward, we would be willing as a task force to implement the sort of mid-century modern style and forego the design style that is reflected in the drawings thus far, because we feel strongly that the interior changes and the site work that has been proposed is really a strong aspect of this project as well. Also, there would be some significant cost savings if we were to go back to the mid-century modern style of the exterior. There wouldn't be as many modifications to change that exterior envelope to depict it more along the lines of the library next door. We would hope that some of those screening walls would still remain, but that's up for how the exterior is going to play out. But we all decided as a group, and there's a couple more of our members that are here online, like myself, that could probably also state the same, that we are in support of that mid-century modern style exterior and the redesign that would be necessary in order to move this project forward. We really would like for it to go forward.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And I'd like to just interrupt for one moment, thank you, Ms. Giles, but I'd also like to say, since your report is referenced by Mr. Hamilton as part of his report, we are not timing this, so please continue.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I I like to look at it a little different perspective. It's mainly on managing construction projects, that's what I do every day as city designer. We we do about three hundred million a year, and we we watch them very closely. Scope, schedule, and budget, three things that we watch all the time. The scope of this project technically hasn't changed, the interior, the floor plan, the this site plan, integrating all the exterior space and try to work with all the surrounding, pretty much maintain the same. The EIR that we looked at, the focus EIR we looked at, it's really just saying that, while there is some significant, when nineteen fifty-one and the building was built in fifty-two and has some significant, we we have no problem with that. I think I think the architect is capable of working with the task force, with the city, with all these people of interest, and will be able to come up with a great design. It was still going to represent San Marino well. The interior, however, will, has not changed from what we started, all the ADA requirement, all the environmental upgrade, including making the building a lot more energy efficient, structural upgrade, all the latest and the greatest that the Californic code required, we will meet. So that's good, the scope hasn't changed that much, except just maybe it changes some exterior material. Schedule, we're going to save at least about six months. If the council would authorize the the architect to go to work now, we'll we'll just put, work together, work hard, and try to meet that June eight deadline, and then we're ready to go out to bed. In this pandemic time, the the cost of construction escalated about ten percent a year. If you save half a year, that's five percent of the saving right there and there. So we 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 fight with time all the time. So if you can pick up the schedule, it's all to the benefit of the citizen. So that's important. And budget, that comes with with the schedule. I think we, the architect, understand what we were looking at, the task force understand what we're looking at, we'll work closely with them and and try to save some of the quote-unquote, trying to match the library type of features. And I think we'll be safe some, actually, saving some money, because if we can just maintain pretty much the way that style is, is going to help us. So with that said, I I urge the city council, we'll release the architect to go ahead and start working, take advantage of this six, have six months, work now, come June eight, we're ready to go. So I I thank you very much for allowing the task force to work efficiently and closely together with the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kang. I don't believe we have any others present who would like to comment on this project. City clerk, do we have anyone virtually who'd like to speak?
I am not seeing any other raised hands or a request in the chat. Oh, here we go, yes. Do you have one, Mr. Quan, go ahead?
Hello there. I'm going to limit my comments to traffic. I am concerned about this one percent and ambient growth factor rate. I do not believe the data supports one percent. For example, the average daily trips data that was submitted by TransTech, they had an ADT map showing that stretch of Huntington Drive between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty went up twenty-three percent. That's not one percent per year. And that was in the eastbound direction. In the westbound direction, the data shows that the traffic went up twenty-eight percent. So I don't see how one percent can be reasonable, especially if you point out that the city still has to meet RENA requirements, there's SB nine and ten, which will increase density. And even though San Marino may take care of their SB nine problems, adjacent cities may not, including South Pasadena, Arcadia. And we know that much of the traffic increase is from cut-through traffic, because the population of San Marino is stagnant, if not going slightly down. So I believe the one percent cannot be true based on what I've just said. Furthermore, I I really question basing any decisions on the I-Terris report, because as this council knows, in October, the I-Terris report was rejected, it was sent back, remanded to the Public Safety Commission because of rather significant deficiencies and errors. So I would not base any decisions on the I-Terris report until it gets fixed. The I-Terris report, as far as the level of service, they're missing important times. They only surveyed the worst hour in the AM and the PM, they're missing important school times. Everybody knows that around pickup time, Huntington Drive is packed with traffic for parents picking up their kids, and the report so far mentions nothing about that. And I'm very glad.
I'll have to ask you to wrap up in another sentence or two, thank you.
Okay, there are, as councilmember Shepherd-Romy said, there are other studies, the school districts had two studies in August of two thousand and eighteen, and they should be included. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else online?
Yes, Mr. John Chow?
Trying to unmute my mic. First of all, thank you, City Council, for giving us the opportunity to speak on this matter. I also like to say that I'm also on the San Marino Center Task Force, and that about, was also on a Blue Ribbon Committee that reviewed the Recreation Department. So I do have some knowledge as far as how those, how that department and how the facility will be utilized going forward. And I think that one of the things that we did envision, both for the Recreation Department and as far as the San Marino Center is concerned, is how it would be compatible to some of the events that will take place at the Barth Athletics Complex. As you know, there's a lot of competition, and certainly afterwards, there, there, there are parties and other celebrations, and a lot of times, those have to go off-site with the San Marino Center. I think that it would be a nice fit to that facility, and will will take place at that location where the participants and the family members can easily walk across to the San Marino Center for those type of events, as opposed to having to go elsewhere, which would create some traffic, as opposed to traffic that's already there, already in the parking lot, and would not necessarily create an increase in the traffic patterns in that area. I also do want to mention that the Recreation Department is a part of the city, it does report to the city as well as city council, and I'm sure guidance will be provided to make sure that there aren't conflicting events. And I'm sure guidance will be provided to make sure that there aren't conflicting events. That would cause undue traffic in that area. And I think that that is something that the city can, City Council can keep in mind because going forward, there is some control that the. City will have as far as the usage of the San Marino Center. And so with that, I'd like to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm still 100% in supportive of the San Marino Center, especially with what Jennifer said. Most of what we were looking at is the usage of the facility, the floor plan, the deferred maintenance, the upgrades, the ADA compliance issues and all that. From the exterior standpoint, it was mainly just to have it blend better with the. With the library since the both of those buildings are owned by the city. And we felt that that would be a good idea just from an estate standpoint, but whether it's the. Modern Colonial Revival or the Spanish Revival, I don't think it's really going to. Deter from the usage of the building and its purpose. And so I'd like to express my support of the project going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cho, for your time and your commitment. Any other speakers?
I do not see any of the raised hands or requests in the chat. We did receive three emails before the meeting that I was able to distribute both to council and the public. One did request that I read it in full, so I'll read that one in full and then summarize the other two. The first is from Ms. Marilyn Peck and she did request that I read this. And her email states, I am truly appalled with the city's lack of insight and consideration for its citizens surrounding the proposed city center. The traffic and parking will increase in all the surrounding areas. There's insufficient parking at present for the six different venues that use the area already. The library, middle school, tennis courts, new gym, board of education, classes and meetings is already at San Marino Center, all compete for parking now. The heavy traffic spills out into the surrounding streets all around the area. What the proposed center traffic and parking problems will further cross Huntington Drive into the library district where it already goes on busy days. It will increase substantially on all sides, especially if SB 9 and 10 are enforced. Children on their way to and from school already have to contend with cars and fumes around the area as well and as well in front of the area along Huntington Drive. Many of the residents are unhappy that they have been and will be impacted further by the overuse of the area. I cannot give my opinion on facades when there are more important issues that exist. We in the library district and areas surrounding the sixth activity complex need solutions to these important problems before we decide on facades. Marilyn Peck, 1570 Wembley Road. We also received an email from Ms. Shelley Boyle. She believes that the draft EIR is incomplete and needs to be redone prior to any decision being made. Her largest concerns were regarding traffic and the cost estimation. And finally, a letter from Ms. Krista Lakin from 2340 Coniston Place. She raised concerns regarding the shortage of parking as well. That are all the public comments.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all who have reported in and shared their feelings of concern about this project. This means that our city is functioning as it should be. I would like to take this back to interim director Hamilton. Am I correct in stating, as I bring it back to council? We are looking at, based on your report, two issues. We, of course, the scoping session is to get input for the EIR. And get that document complete. And then in your report, you included the recommendation of the task force work group. About move going forward with the design. Is that accurate?
That's not a staff recommendation. That did come from the task force and it's at the council's discretion. We simply disclosed that in the staff report.
Got it. And with that, I will then go to the two liaisons. To the work group and see if there's anything else that you want to add based on what they have reported.
No, I think the Jennifer. I agree.
Okay, great. At that point then, let's move forward and. Go back for our final comments. May I ask? Councilmember Wong.
I mean, I agree that we need to update this facility and. And I would prefer that we don't change the exterior as much as we can and, you know. Because if we ask our residents to preserve San Marino, we should do the same thing. And I see that we only need to. I mean, receive and file, right? Do we need to make a decision on anything?
I think you can accept what has been offered to you and we can move forward with that.
Okay, and another thing is that this is taxpayers' money, so, you know. We should be more careful and make sure that we don't waste any more. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney.
I second my councilmember Wong's comments and add to it. My concerns are for the. Project is going to be quite costly. And I, I believe Raymond brought up that the costs are going up 10%. I was just told by somebody that it's 20 to 30, they're having to redo their construction costs and take them up 20 to 30. And that's before change orders and products not being available. So this is a very, very costly project for our community. It will be a major investment for us and I question whether, well, obviously. I would like to keep it in the historical. What are we calling it? Modern Colonial Revival or whatever is the new term of what we're sitting in. And keep those features that are character defining. And I do think I read over these documents very closely several times. I think the roof material should not be tile or red asphalt shingles, but we should keep it in the wood because it's a character defining feature, according to the experts. At least in one of them. I also have a great deal of concern about the potential projects going on in front. One of them having to do with parking to make parking spots and lessen that front space. Is real problematic for me for both the look of the building and the health of the trees out there. And if we're in the mode of preserving this and how it looks. I believe that it needs to be kept in that form and not made into a desert scape and kill the trees. So I guess I have both aesthetic concerns, but then fundamentally, what it comes down to for me is the scope needs to be increased. In the two areas of the parking impact and the traffic impacts because I do not believe. That the numbers, I believe it was one of our speakers, Mr. Quan, who brought up relying on the I-Terrors studies. Or I don't know how to say their name properly. I-Terrors. There were many problems with that document and we have. Remanded it as a matter of fact to the Public Safety Commission and to the vendor to be redone in large part. Because it did not meet our contractual obligations, their contractual obligations, et cetera. So I don't think that that's accurate and I can't rely on those numbers for traffic and parking. And I do think we actually have to have some concrete. Changes to be made or dealt with and proposals that the mitigation that says like, we're going to share an events calendar with the school district. Or we're going to manage our parking with the middle school. And we're going to do an additional parking study in a year and we're going additionally looking at removing. The front lawn and putting parking there. I don't think any of those factors really deal with and come up. With about 30 spaces minimally that we need for the building of a size. And if it was a city. It is a city project and the city should stand by their own rules that we impose on others. And that should have to do with parking that should have to do as well. And in here it says 31 spots need to be found. So if that means we have to look at alternative locations and how we manage that, that has to be dealt with in a study. And I would encourage us to, and hopefully people will support, a better look at that area so we can get both traffic and parking. Better at concrete plans instead of pushing it to a year after the certificate of occupancy. By then it's too late, the building is done and we're going to deal with a very unhappy community as we've heard from. Ms. Peck who lives right across the street. And I don't think that's fair for any of the residents in this area to be so impacted when we see it coming. So if this does go forward. I believe that the focus EIR must include some additional studies in the areas of traffic and parking. And also concrete mitigations in those areas. And I would ask that the alternate design, keep all the character defining features, including the wood roof. Existing landscaping in front at least, as well as the design from the San Marino Garden, oh, excuse me, women's. Let's see on the floor.
That's it. Thank you. Councilmember Udi.
First of all, appreciate staff's work on this, you know, long project, really appreciate the work of the task force. And the great, you know, brainstorming and coming together that happened here. I also would support the task force recommendation to bring back a contract renewal for the architects. We can run parallel paths here while we're doing the EIR and the public review period to also get on with the, with the new outside skin.
Complete? Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I agree with Councilmember Udi that we should move forward on the dual track right now. I, especially with respect to the cost saving that's been mentioned by people anywhere between 10 and 30%. If we, if we move forward and, and start that process. Councilmember Romi is correct when she said it's a major investment, but it's about time we made a major investment in this building. It's, it's as far as the traffic count and the parking count. This building is used right now. It is going to be, obviously, we would hope, used more in the future. But the uses that are going to occur in the future are at times when there's not peak traffic. When we don't have to compete with school being in. So we may have to increase our contract number with what we rent from the school district. But I don't perceive it to be as big as problem has been made. So I would recommend moving forward on the dual track and let's make this major investment now. Whether than wait, make the major investment plus 20% in the future.
Thank you. I'd like to start by, of course, thanking both staff and the task force work group. I thought the scoping session was helpful, valuable. I think we've seen areas that we need to pay more attention to. And I thought that was really bright of the work group to say, well, gee, why don't we get going on what we're doing? I guess I am one of those folks who's gone 360 degrees because I did start in my own favor. With the design that we look like we're going back to. I am not feeling like we should fight for what we want. There's a good chance we would lose. And at this point, if they said put pink circles above it, I'd go with it only because. Our community needs a place to gather. We currently have this and it really is becoming a risk with ADA issues, heating, air conditioning. So many different factors and the one thing that I hear when I speak to the residents is how much like people like getting together. So I think it's a great idea to consider doing both tracks simultaneously. And I'm extremely impressed and I feel secure by the depth of care and concern that the work group has. And hearing Ms. Giles talk, I felt a little bit jealous that there's such a kumbaya with that group. And I suspect everyone is contributing equally, so that's very comforting and reassuring to us on council. So yes, I could concur. Do I have a motion?
I mean, to receive and file the status update on the San Marino Center renovation project. And direct staff to bring back a contract amendment at our next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
No.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
No.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you and thank you once again for all of those involved. Okay, at this point, do any council member wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? As a reminder, council members may vote no on a specific consent calendar item without pulling the item for discussion. Yes, yes, go ahead.
I have a question for our city attorney just regarding item number eight that I wanted to ask at this time. Does it matter because we now have published the. Not substantive changes, if you will, for the ordinance, should that be separately voted on? Or is there any reason, can it be part of the consent calendar? Obviously it can be, but would it be wise to pull it and separately vote on that particular item as a standalone regular agenda item?
No, the council approved the changes that were made to the ordinance by the council at the first reading. So this second reading just reflects those changes, so it does not need to be separately pulled. It can remain a consent item.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Jacobowski, actually on that item, we have had two requests for public comment.
Okay.
Could pull it to do those public comments.
So you're talking about which I.
The approval of ordinance number 021.
Okay, so we will definitely pull that at this time since we will be having public comment. Does anyone wish to pull any other item?
Yeah, and then I had one other one and that is item 13. I just wanted to discuss the sidewalk. Contract, I know that it's terminating and I don't have a problem with it, but what is the going forward nature and what? So I would like to just have a brief update from Director Throne, sorry. As to what will be the result of the conclusion of our sidewalk repair contract.
Thank you. Any other council members wish to pull? Hearing none, do we have any other members of the public wanting to pull any other number? Okay, do I have a motion to approve items three through seven? Nine through 12 and 14 through 17?
So move.
Second. I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes on everything, no on 15.
Okay, and.
Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving back to item eight, approval of ordinance O-21-1386. Director Hamilton, we have some public.
Would you like to just go straight to public?
Please.
Let me see. Ms. Ryan Barrett, if you would like to.
Good evening.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Just really quickly regarding agenda item eight. I submitted a letter to the council, however, I realized that it came in a little late. I would like to just quickly go over. A letter or comment to that. The Pasadena Foothills Realtors, which I am the Government Affairs Director of, represents more than 2,000 Realtors who conduct business in the city of San Marino. On behalf of those members, Pfar would like to provide feedback on a proposed ordinance number. O211386. We are extremely concerned that the city is attempting to adopt this ordinance. Which appears to seek to skirt the rule of law, which has been clearly set forth by SB 9. This proposed ordinance on face value appears to be half-hearted. And it's attempt to fulfill the needs of San Marino's required housing element needs. However, upon further investigation, it uses the guise of creating affordable housing to stop growth from happening within your city limits. The city council should not approve any anti-growth initiatives, especially if they prey on the underserved of this community. This is a ploy that seeks to strong-arm property owners. Section B, item five of this proposed ordinance forces a property owner to, to agree to a long-term income restricted agreement on their property. This is effectively a 99-year deed restriction covenant, requiring a unit to be made affordable housing and that it is occupied by an extremely low, very low or low. This approach will violate your residents' private property rights. SB 9 would only apply to approximately 127,000 units in LA County. We found that only 10% of those. We found that only 10% of those units would be used for these types of projects, which is a drop in the bucket. San Marino already suffers from, from lagging growth. Policies like this one proposed will only perpetuate those issues. As this ordinance is written, it is clear that council and city staff do not have the best intentions of the city or the community in mind with this proposal.
Thank you. I'm going to have to ask you to give your closing sentence or two?
Absolutely. Pasadena supports, actively supports and appreciates your projects that seek to address affordable housing issues and creation of housing fairly. What's been proposed is a poison pill designed to scare people and ruin property values for anyone who wishes to create generational wealth. We cannot condone this egregious and unlawful plan. Pasadena Foothills Realtors would resolutely oppose any burdensome ordinances that are a gross overreach of private property rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Mr. Adam Bray Ali?
Hi and good evening. Are you, are you able to hear me yet?
Yes.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk and certainly have enjoyed hearing the discussion that you've had about the community center, which I look forward to using and participating with as it comes online. My name is Adam Bray Ali. I'm a local realtor. I'm also a member of the Board of the Pasadena Foothill Association of Realtors, Pfar. I wasn't aware of the letter that had been sent, but I wanted to call and add in a few things. Our association areas that we serve include San Marino. We've enjoyed a long and cordial and very productive relationship with San Marino that has in general remained really free of many of the bureaucratic roadblocks that we've seen related to private property sales and leasing in neighboring cities. I do applaud your attempt to work with this state law. SB nine has caused all kinds of problems and hassles and questions and especially a real and very honest concern of cities like San Marino that are mostly residential homes without multifamily. We've all heard about all of the challenges with finding affordable housing in the region and the area. And many of our own families, friends, and probably even members of the city council and people in the audience today, as well as the city staff struggle with the cost of housing, both here in San Marino and elsewhere in the region. That said, the city ordinance creates a framework that has some items that concern me personally. The three that I would like to point out would be layering on additional costly permits, inspections, compliance and certifications that really don't add to the goal of creating lower cost affordable housing. A real prime example is the blanket requirement that's a number 16 for LEED platinum status. This is a third-party certificate. Just by itself, you have to pay $5,000 simply for that application, not to mention the additional construction and development costs that would be required to meet that specific standard. A call that I made recently to some local contractors was generally met with confusion where they said, why would you do a LEED platinum ADU? It doesn't make any sense. And I said, well, you know, the city wants to, to require that. And so what would that in general cost? And their estimate was that it would probably add between 10 and 25% on top of the costs. A number figure that one gave me was $30,000. Then that's in addition to the certificate.
I'm going to have to ask you to give your final few sentences, please.
Okay. The, the next two would be related to rule number 11 about the construction requirements matching the design style, color and materials of the existing structure. And while many homes and estates in San Marino have unique architectural design and really incredible beauty, we can probably all find a few homes that are either ugly ducklings or potentially built with materials that are no longer available, like adobe walls or known to be dangerous, like asbestos siding. And so requiring that a ADU, 800 square foot be built in the same style just doesn't allow for both the requirement about lead energy efficiency, all of the additional requirements related to roofing, rainwater systems that the city has added on.
I'm going to have maybe another one, one more sentence.
And then that third, which was really related to number 14, about if owner property wanted to build two of these at the same time, there's a requirement that all of the work be done simultaneously. And as I listened to you discuss the construction of the city building, you know, imagine a homeowner running into the same type of increases in property development costs, materials skyrocketing and fees. And at the same time, knowing that they are not going to be able to charge a market rate rent.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments and we appreciate you sharing. Thank you. Is there anyone else who had asked online about this item?
Those are, those are all the requests for comment.
And then I will bring it back to Councilwoman Shepard Romy. You wanted some additional comment on eight, or are you finished with that item?
I did not on eight. Thank you. City attorney answered my question and I appreciate that.
And then we will move to councilwoman's request on number 13. Thank you, Mayor.
Were we going to vote on this?
Yeah. My apologies. Thank you. Do we have a motion for item eight for approval?
Yes, I'm getting there.
Five eighty-five.
I'm, yes. I move to waive full reading and adopt ordinance number oh dash two one dash one three eight six in ordinance of the City Council of San Marino, California, adding section twenty-three point oh two, zero two, excuse me, point three three to the San Marino Municipal Code to provide for regulations concerning two-unit residential developments in single-family residential zones, amending section twenty-three point zero two point zero one, making two-unit residential developments in urban lot splits permitted uses in single-family residential zones, adding article zero six to chapter 22 of the San Marino Municipal Code to provide regulations concerning urban lot split subdivisions in single-family residential zones and adding section twenty-three point zero three point one zero to provide for objective design standards in the C1 zone.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Romy?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13, please go ahead, councilwoman.
I wanted to ask Director Throne for a bit more information. I understand this is a formality about the conclusion of the four-year sidewalk construction and contract that we had, program replacement program that we had. And I was, wanted to update as to, because of the public safety impacts of our sidewalks, we have children biking and going to school, as well as so many members walking of our community, walking for their health every day. And as well as in our business districts, I know that there are sometimes issues there with the sidewalks and shifting, given some of the use and age. And so I wanted to make sure that we don't just let this go into disrepair, that we have now a maintenance type of schedule and repairs coming forward from your department, or if it's an outside contract that we'll be looking toward in the future to keep up the sidewalks and continue the progress that we've made over the last four years.
That's an excellent, that's an excellent question, councilmember. My plan is to bring you another multi-year contract before the end of the fiscal year. It'll be in the, the, it'll still be a mile unless the council feels strongly that I should increase it to a mile and a half. Of course, that will be 50% more expensive. But we had a very good success with FS Construction and we expect to get some really good bids when we go out. They really enjoy multi-year contracts. FS was also during this four-year period, they expanded out into Pasadena, into South Pasadena. They were all over primarily because we were able to secure for them a four-year contract that they could buy more equipment, hire more staff. So I will be bringing to you another multi-year contract. This is a program and it should keep going until we start over again at the first sidewalk we've completed four years ago. There's 100 miles of sidewalk in San Marino. So this will take us a little bit of time.
And I had two concerns I wanted to raise with you if we are going out for something. The first is to get on the repair list, so to speak. I know sometimes it's done by staff and sometimes there's a whole segment. So it would be encompassed on this, you know, schedule of, of work for future. And so I wanted to know, we have, I often get questions when I see people like, I've called about the cracks on the sidewalk and I can't get past it, et cetera, a number of times. Who is the appropriate person? Is it something that should go through community development department? Because it's a matter that they would get code enforcement, but not really, or should people be going to you? Or what would be the appropriate path? Because residents often have a very specific one near their home or that they pass every day. That raises some concerns.
We take requests from all known means of communication. We really do ask that people use the Go Request app that they can download from either the App Store or the Android Store. That will help us because that gives us a good location, also gives us a way to communicate back with the resident. We take those, we put them on the list and then we generally, in the summertime is when we go through and make our, our repairs through our contractor. Then the rest of the year, we, we collect locations. If there's an immediate hazard, we will go out and do something just to get us through until we can come in and replace the concrete for real on an annual basis.
All right. That's helpful. Thank you. And the second question that I had is, the other concern is that this particular contractor, the concrete or asphalt, I don't know what the proper term is, looks very different than the older materials usually around, like if they repair a certain number of squares or a corner and replace it, it's very different than the existing. Is there a way that they can put in tint or something material that more closely matches the historic sidewalks that we are keeping that are in good repair?
We do have that as our specification is there is a specific color we've identified for concrete sidewalk here in San Marino. And so that's, that's something that we, we make sure that the contractor complies with, but I, I'm glad you brought that up. That's, that's something that we added to this project about in year two. And so the initial concrete was, was not meeting that standard only because we hadn't thought of it at that time. For the upcoming multi-year contract, it'll be, it's a written specification for them to do that.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that because I see it in my neighborhood. There's quite a bit of difference. Thank you for the information. And I would be happy to make a motion unless there are other questions or comments by my fellow council members.
Please go ahead.
I move to accept year four, the multi-year sidewalk replacement program project number eighteen dash nine through seventy, performed by FS Contractors, Inc. as complete and authorize the city clerk to file the notice of completion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Romy?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do we have any written communications or public writings for distribution? Seeing none. It is now time for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Excuse me, I'm not seeing anybody live. Is there anyone virtual?
There are no requests for comment at this time.
Thank you. Are there any adjournments requested by council members this evening? That is good. And future agenda items, is there anything a council member would like to see on a future agenda?
Yes, I have. It's my understanding and I just sent the information to Director Throne and City Manager Marlo about the drought provisions and restrictions are going to go into effect and supposed to be on January 14th. I don't know if we have any provisions for that, but it's supposed to affect homeowners. And so I would like to see that at our end of the month, what restrictions we are facing in our community and what is expected, how, how our city will comply with those.
Okay, thank you. Is there consensus among council? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. May we add that, please, City Manager? Is there anything else that we would like to add for future agenda items? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.